And thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call the school board meeting to order. It is March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. This is, bear with us, this is our first official school board meeting on Zoom. So it might not be the same as in person, but we will do the best we can. So at this time, can I get someone, Ms. Bellamy, can you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, and we're moving on. So the next one is the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda? Or are we, any dissension? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. So if you do have something you want to add or take away, please notate it on the screen with a yes or hand raised. Okay, so then the agenda moves forward as stated. We are not going to be doing, of course, our focus on staff, students, and community. That's been postponed. We do our, our student advisory board representative is not online with us. I am going to quickly read our opening statement at this time. So it is with gratitude that we, I'm sorry, we want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, for school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, which of course, no one is physically present, we still have this on the Anchorage School District YouTube, so that you can participate that way. All right, do we have any reports? Are there any reports from our committees?
From the governance committee, we postponed the meeting. We, right now, are scheduled to meet on the thirty-first, but I'm not sure what the status of that is with everything, whether we would be doing that remotely or trying to do it in person or not.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bellamy?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ditto with what Mr. Holloman, member Holloman just said. Will, our next meeting is scheduled also for the thirty-first. I'd just like to remind board members of our legislative priorities and when they have the opportunity to engage with legislators. And of course, you know, continue to get the information out about the bonds. But our next meeting, we'll see how it goes. It's scheduled for the thirty-first from three to four. Thank you.
Okay. And I know, Ms. Michaelis, what's the update on budget?
So we have scheduled our next finance committee meeting, the, prior to the first board meeting in April. And same as previous speakers, we'll just wait till we get a little bit closer to it and see kind of how it's expected to be done. But right now, that's tentatively when we are scheduled for, and we've not met since our last finance committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Normally, we would have our gap analysis, our goal monitoring. Because of, of course, what things are going on right now, we are going to bypass that and we will pick that up again later. So right now, we have public testimony on non-agenda or non-action items. Excuse me. Katie, do we have anybody? I can read the statement, but do we have anybody?
I'm calling David Nice right now.
Okay, let me go ahead and read the statement. The board welcomes public comment on non-agenda, non-action items. We value public comment as an ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be substituted in writing. We're not going to worry about the table in front of you because you're not going to see anything. Right now, we're taking testimony over the phone, so Katie will keep track of the time. And additionally, it's not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issue raises, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. We do have Mr. David Nice online, and David, you can go ahead and begin, and I'll start the timer.
All right, well, thank you, School Board, I hope you can hear me. I just wanted to kind of reiterate that how we got to where we're at, where we're looking at yet another math selection. When I started in ASD in the nineteen-eighties, the various math publishers would send their books out to the school, to the state district. The district would send it out to the schools, the schools would review them. We, as teachers, would sit down and rank them in choice. Our math department people would take them back to the Anchorage headquarters. They would evaluate all the responses, and then they would tend to give us one or two to choose from. And that, that worked pretty good. We were in the high sixties. I sent you a, a report on the Anchorage School District from nineteen ninety-six or nineteen ninety-eight. I can't remember what it is. And I sent you the whole report, but the math section on it shows that back then, we were using the CAT in the Iowas, and we were sitting at about the sixtieth percentile in all the grades, between three and eight. In nineteen ninety-five, Superintendent Crystal, listening to some of the advisors over at the headquarters, decided that we were going to try an exploratory math system called Everyday Math. And that was introduced, had a couple pilot schools, it was eventually rolled out district-wide. And our scores by the end of that time had dropped down into the thirties. I remember, we keep changing the types of tests, so about the only thing you can look at is like your ethics results and stuff. In that, two thousand thirteen, continuing with this process of having shifted the responsibility for selecting the school texts away from the schools and in over to the head chat, Bobby Joe Herb put together a committee that went out and set out the texts that they were going to review for the two thousand, I believe, thirteen or fourteen adoption. The community overwhelmingly said Fact and Math and Singapore Math. Those were the top two choices. The third choice from the community was the one that you went with, which is Go Math. The results, the proof is in the pudding, basically. You selected a curriculum that has discontinued because the publisher doesn't publish it anymore. Our results are lower than they've been in the last twenty years. And that's why I have grave concern about the fact that the process that you used for Everyday Math selection and for Go Math selection is the exact same process that you're using to choose the book that's being recommended by the administration. It's failed twice. That selection process has failed twice. What you should have been doing is looking at what's working. That's called best practices. And you have several schools in the district that continually, for decades, have scored higher than your average schools in the ASD at the elementary level. They don't pick books because they have a pretty color. They don't pick books because everybody is represented in it and it has neutral language. They pick math books that have good practices.
I, I don't know, I don't know if you were able to hear that, the timer, but the three minutes did go off.
All right, so I'll just summarize. You should take a look at where your best performing schools are and go with that math book instead of using a broken process.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Nice. Katie, do we have anyone else?
No, Madam President, no one at this time. We do have someone who wishes to testify at the very, at the last public testimony slot, at the end of the meeting.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda then. Ms. Hildy?
Or is it Superintendent?
Okay, I'm here. Oh, I'm sorry, Superintendent update first, you're right, sorry, thanks, guys. Sorry, I didn't want, I didn't mean to skip you, Dr. Bishop.
Oh, no worries, Madam President. We have a document to place up here now, just to guide us. It's really, if you can see it, it's an agenda of just different speakers. What was requested and certainly appropriate is an update on our response and what's happening thus far with the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the actions of the Anchorage School District. And I appreciated earlier that Member Holloman shared appreciation for the actions taken early on, even though they were very difficult to make and very controversial at the time, that I think now we are happy and glad that we did those following the science of the situation. I am going to go ahead and ask each lead to share some information, and under those different categories, they will then call on their staff. Any staff that is requested to speak, my leads, please be sure to say your first and last name, as well as your job title in the Anchorage School District, as your sharing and your report will be made public, and we want to be able to access in, and on the audio and video, who you are and what you have said. So it's very important for public testimony and public record to have that. So without further ado.
Dr. Bishop, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
Do you want board members to ask questions as we go through this, or wait until the end?
I, that's a great question, and I think because that way we don't forget, after each section, what we'll have is, we'll pause to say, in these categories, do you have any, in the operations categories, do you have any questions? So each of the leads, if you could, each chief that's going to report, if, when all of your folks have reported, if you could stop and assess questions. Then, of course, the questions, if you could direct them to the leads, they will appoint the right person, just in case you don't remember the names of the folks. The, our teams are online, just like you are with Zoom, and so we will, right now, their pictures are not showing because we wanted the public to see the board initially, but as each person speaks, Mike Flackenstein is going to put up their picture, so you'll, you will actually get to see the speakers at the, at that time. I want to say just overall, I wanted you to hear from people because our, our team is amazing. We really worked tightly together to make the best decisions for the young people of Anchorage, as well as the families. And really, we were concerned about the entire city. We are a large organization in our city, and as such, we have a public responsibility to the community. And I feel as though our actions were deliberate and were very specific, although very difficult to make and difficult to receive by some. I believe that we will save lives. I truly believe that these actions can impact the lives and the effect of COVID-nineteen in the city of Anchorage, as well as the state. So without further ado, I just want to share with the board and the team an appreciation. From the bottom of my heart, as your superintendent, I wouldn't have chosen any other people to work with. So, Mr. Roth, actually, excuse me, we're going to start with the municipal EOC liaison, which is, you've met her before, Ashley Lally. We will show you her picture.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ashley Lally. I'm the Director of Security and Emergency Preparedness. My main role during this pandemic is to provide a link between ASD and the Municipal Emergency Operations Center, as well as to support any internal emergency planning and task and resource tracking. We had our designated liaisons on-site at the Muni EOC last week, from Monday through Friday. But this week, they transitioned to an online version, and I have since personally acted as the liaison virtually. We also have virtual participation from our Communications Department in their JIC, which is a Joint Information Center. I am involved in ten A and daily ops briefs. I report any info that we have at our ASD eleven AM huddle. And then I provide sit reps or situation reports to the Muni by one PM daily. They send out weekly incident action plans, which is essentially what they are focusing on for that operational period. And they also send out daily sit reps at four PM. But really, the main connection for us with them is resource request. We have already both requested and shared resources with the Muni, specifically PPE, or Personal Protective Equipment, and Manpower Nursing Support. We also continue to coordinate directly with our SROs, who have been front-loading a presence at our feeding sites, as well as sending SROs out on any patrol calls that come in from juveniles or families. So our kiddos are still seeing a friendly face during those calls. APD may decide at some point to retain the SROs back to traffic if school continues to be canceled. But for now, they are still supporting us out at the schools and in our kids' homes. Pending any questions, that's all I have for you this evening.
Board members, are there any questions? If you could raise your hand or say yes. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions.
Okay, we'll move on to, thank you, Ashley. We'll move on to Tom Roth, Chief Operating Officer.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Bishop, through, through the board president, to, to the Anchorage School Board. So thank you for the opportunity to spend a little time talking about some of the operations that have been going on, really, since the, the start of spring break. And I, I plan to cover three primary topics. First, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about building maintenance and the deep cleaning that's been going on throughout the district. I'll, I'll pause and then transition into a discussion on the, the district's meal distribution, feeding plan, and then pause, and then I'll, I'll transfer over to Ms. Jennifer Petronas, our Director of Healthcare Services, to, to provide an update on, on where, where we are in the district and really as a, as a city in terms of, you know, some of the medical services and statuses, but also to give an update to the board and what some of our great nurses have been doing across the district here over the last few days. So first, with regards to buildings, as mentioned, you know, we went into a very deliberate, deep clean and disinfection plan right at the start of spring break. That, that carried through, through the weekend, is actually, it's ongoing. Rob Holland and Darren Hargraves have, have done a great job managing that effort. Likewise, for, for our, our maintenance technicians, this is really kind of a, an optimal time, has been an optimal time for, for them to get caught up on, on their preventive maintenance work, as well as, you know, repairing things, you know, gigs in buildings, addressing a lot of the work orders. So we, we have that ongoing ability, and we're prepared to surge to take care of anything that needs to happen. I, I will pause if there are any questions on maintenance or custodial support.
I am looking. Any questions or comments, board members? I'm not seeing anything. If I'm missing something, please just speak out, but I'm not seeing anything. Ms. Roth, you can proceed.
Okay, so, so, thank, thank you, Madam President. I'm going to transition to talk about our, our food service support to, to our students. And they're really, they're, they're, they're two primary components of it. But what I'd like to point out is, is that this information, you know, that, that, that I'm going to talk to, it, it is available on the, the ASD website under COVID-nineteen family resources. And it's, it's been a very dynamic thing where, as, as we develop this, this program, you know, that, that we are reaching out to, to contact as many students and to affect as many of our, our students in need. So, so the, the two components of, of this program, first, there is a fixed feeding site distribution program. And, and starting tomorrow, we, we're going to, to begin a, a mobile meal distribution program under, under the leadership and oversight of Andy Murgens and in support Heather, Heather Philp, in Student Transportation. So this Monday, we, we began the, the fixed feeding sites at eighteen schools. And, and the selection process, again, somewhat dynamic, but the eighteen schools that we picked were primarily in those areas where we had students that were, were most food at risk in, in, in many of our, our Title One schools. Starting tomorrow, we're going to be operating in, in twenty-one schools. And, and we did kind of widen the aperture because we recognized that we have students in need throughout the district. So we are, we are in Eagle River, Chugiak, and, and throughout the Anchorage proper. To provide a few details of this, this program, the, the times of operation are from ten AM to two PM in the afternoon. And, and any, any student and parent who arrives to, to pick up a meal receives a meal. And, and the meals are comprised of both a breakfast and a lunch meal. The, the, the lunch meal does require some, some heating, some preparation, and, and the packages will have instructions on, on how, how to do that. I also want to, to, to note that this really is a combined effort. So we, we are doing our best to make sure that we're ensuring, you know, good distancing between students as they come in and, and family members. So we have folks from Student Transportation who are on-site to help manage the movement of people. Also, we've got nurses inside of the schools, you know, there to, 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 to see kids. It's, it's all about, you know, making sure that, that we can provide for, for all their needs, not, not simply food. So that's, that is the fixed site food distribution plan. I will briefly pause to answer any questions on that.
So, are there any? I, I'm just, Ms. Bellamy, did you have a question?
Yeah, just on the mobile, the mobile meals that are starting tomorrow, how, how are those going to, how, how will that work?
So, so through the president to Member Bellamy, what a great segue. Thank, thank you for the opportunity to, to talk about this, and I'm, I'm, I'm very excited. So tomorrow morning, we, we're going to start with, with three, three routes. And these have been published, we have pushed as, as much as we can to get information out, both the, the, the times when buses will be at specific sites, as well as the maps of the routes that they're going to follow. So three routes starting tomorrow, and, and again, these are concentrated in, in areas that have the greatest density of food insecure families. So Susitna, Muldoon is one route. The second route is in Airport Heights, Tyson Elementary area, and then the third route is in the vicinity of Clatt Elementary School. So to get to Member Bellamy's question, the concept is, the, these buses will run, will run a route based on a fixed time schedule. We publish the locations. So what we are, we are hoping to see is a number of, of students and family members at these stops, and they're, they're typical bus stops along normal bus routes. We will have, in addition to the, the food handlers distributing the same meals that we're providing at the fixed sites, you know, each bus will have at least one, if not two nurses onboard again to see students, and they will move through, through the process, through the route. They will stop at each site for up to fifteen minutes before moving on to the next location. So we are, we are in the works to add four additional bus routes by the end of this week, again, to expand the area. And those will be, one in the Chugiak Eagle River area, one on Jay Bear, one in the Government Hill area, and then one down in South Anchorage. And, and I want to emphasize, this is a pretty dynamic process right now. We, we are, and are, and will be continuing to adjust based on, on need and demand. So I'll pause again to, to, to answer any questions. I've also got Andy Murgens up on, on the, the Zoom, if there are any specific questions to him.
Board members, do you have any questions? I'm looking, yes, Ms. Hildy, and then Deana Mitchell.
Oh, thank you. I'm just wondering, is this just similar to what, how it went after the earthquake? And did you feel prepared, like, that you already knew how to do this from that experience? Did you notice any impact from that?
Through, through the president to, to Member Hildy. I do, I do believe the earthquake experience did kind of help us organize a bit. But, but I, I would, I would tell, tell you that, you know, we, we kind of saw this one coming a long time ago. You know, when it first started to manifest in China and move, you know, we, we kind of anticipated that potentially we could see something happen here in Anchorage. So, so Andy Murgens and team, we, we had, we had conversations. So we, we were kind of, kind of leaning forward where this to happen. So I, I, I think that all together helped us organize pretty quick, and, you know, and it's a testament, I think, to the leaders and the people that, once the decision was made in, in a matter of one or two days, we had people in schools on Monday. But thank you for asking.
Okay. Deana Mitchell?
So first of all, I, the district response has been amazing. And in listening to the joint press conference last night, or the joint informational meeting, just the municipality and the district have really done an amazing job. I'm just curious, how is word building about this food distribution? Are a fair number of students taking advantage of that? And I am really, really pleased to hear that that's how we are deploying the nurses, because that's something I was wondering about.
So through, through the president to, to Member Mitchell, it, we have seen a significant improvement in numbers today. And Andy is still collecting that data, but yesterday, we had about, about fifteen hundred students. And, and indications are that we, we've seen at least twice that number, if not more, come through, come through schools today. And we're hoping to see an expansion. I, I will, I will ask Andy Murgens if, if, if he's up and, and has some current data, if he could provide that.
So this is Andy Murgens, I'm the Senior Director for Student Nutrition. It looks like my video is having a little bit of challenge here. We haven't compiled any kind of, any data from today yet, so, but we do have some indicators that, that's, that certain schools at select locations tripled the numbers of, of students that they saw that came in today versus yesterday, if that answers the question.
Thank you. Ms. Michaelis?
I guess more, probably more of a comment than a question. I've already started to receive calls from teachers on, you know, reaching out to the kids and stuff like that. I'm sure that'll come up a little bit later as well. But I just want to say thank you on behalf of all the people that I've talked to out in the Chugiak Eagle River area for expanding the meal services out here and all the way up to Chugiak Elementary. It just, they've all said, you know, thank you, because when it first started to roll up, our area was feeling a little neglected. But we very much appreciate you guys going as far north as you have, and so I just want to say thank you.
Any other board questions or comments? I, I do have one on, so one of the things I was looking at, because I did look at that schedule that went out, Mr. Roth, the bus schedules and the list of schools. So Airport Heights, they're actually doing it at the school, and then they're also doing a bus route?
Through, through, through the president, if I, if I understand the question, yes, we, we do have the fixed location at Airport Heights Elementary. And, and again, what, what we're, what we're trying to do, and, and to, to be sure if, if this is excessive and we find that we don't have much, much activity with the bus route, we're prepared to adjust. But our, our goal here really is to, is to reach out to as many students as we can, and we recognize that, that some families are transportation-challenged. So we're really trying to make sure that, that nobody is, is left out.
No, I, I certainly appreciate that, and I, 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 again, I'm just going to say, boy, everybody that's been involved in this has just been amazing. I haven't heard one, one negative thing about, just praise for what you guys are doing and how we're handling this. And, you know, just very appreciative. The other question I have is, when we open these schools and nurses are seeing students, we do have a procedure in place if somebody comes in and they're showing symptoms?
So, if, if I might, through, through the president, I, I'm going to ask Jennifer Petronas to, to address that specific question during, during her, her update, because to, to answer your question, yes, the nurses do have specific procedures to respond to any student, staff member, or parent, in this example, who may be exhibiting symptoms. any student, staff member, or parent in this example, who may be exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19. So with that, I will pass off to Jennifer Petronas, again, our Director of Healthcare Services.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
So to answer your question, we do have a procedure in place that is step-by-step. It's a one-page document that all the nurses were given before school was suspended. And they have been trained on it, both now over Zoom and in person. So I'm very confident that when school resumes, if they do have anyone that comes into their building that is exhibiting signs and symptoms, that they're prepared to answer that call.
And also during this time that we're open for meals and they're seeing students, that would also be in effect, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. The nurses that are at the food distribution sites and riding the buses have everything they need as far as equipment in case and PPE, in case a student or parent or anyone shows up displaying signs and symptoms. So I'm pretty confident that no matter what situation the nurse gets, that they'll be prepared.
And I'm pretty confident that you are doing exactly that. Thank you. Any other board questions or comments?
I'm not, yes. This is Margot, I'm sorry. It's really a comment. Okay. You know, I just think that the work that this district has put into everything, but especially into the food insensitivity and continuing health services for our kids, those are equity situations that, I'm just really happy that they have been handled so well. And that the staff have been trained. We are obviously listening to what their needs are. These are uncharted times, we'll hear that over and over again. But when it comes to equity, food, and I'll hold my technology question, but food, health, and technology, those are my three concerns. And I thank you guys for addressing those for me, for the whole city, actually.
Right.
During this situation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do have one question. If we get a call from a family, maybe they're not one of those schools. I mean, we have schools everywhere that have families that are struggling. And we can't meet all of those needs. We're going to look at the ones that are more focused or higher need area. But if we get a call, are we responding?
Put them in here if you want. You can put them in here.
It's two forty times four. I'll just put them out.
Through the Board President, if we get any call like that, I can assure you that we will respond to families in need. We'll figure that out.
Okay, I just want to let families know. I mean, I don't know if we want to, but maybe that's not a bad thing. And maybe we already have it out there and I've just missed it. But just that, you know, if there's a family in need that, you know, the kids aren't, you know, they need meals or whatever, shoot, you can pack them up in my car and I'll deliver them. But I know that you guys are thinking about that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Roth, Jennifer, do you have additional things to report? And we'll keep it moving on.
I do. So to answer that last question, my nurses have been really busy the last few days, calling our most vulnerable population, our sped students, life skills, students that are wheelchair-bound, have chronic illnesses, are immune compromised, and asking them what their needs are and if they need a meal delivered. So we started doing that today. And the nurses that went out on those meal deliveries said that they had an awesome experience and they can't wait to do it for the remainder of the time that the district doesn't have students. So I was very pleased to hear that. The families were so appreciative because these are students that if they were otherwise to go out into the community, they would be very susceptible to getting sick. So they were very appreciative. My nurses have been extremely busy. The EOC asked for nursing staff to man the two-one-one call center, which we've been doing all week. They also are going to start helping the Anchorage Health Department collect specimens at the drive-through COVID-19 specimen collection center. They're also going to start answering phone calls for Anchorage Health Department and calling patients back that have questions. They're also doing the meals on the go with the busing system and student nutrition so that nursing support is at all those bus stops and at all the food distribution sites. So my nurses have been very busy, but I've been very pleased and happy with their professionalism throughout this and just their wanting to give back to the community.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I mean, I don't even have to bring these things up. I mean, you know, we do it because we have questions. But I know that this district is taking care of our children and our community. And, boy, I just can't thank you guys enough. Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, that is amazing. Thank you. How many nurses do we have? I'm just curious.
One hundred and eight.
Significant.
So we are pretty much manning the Anchorage Health Department with our, we have thirty nurses that volunteered to work there, and they only have a few. So we're taking up most of their building, which is great.
Yeah, great. All right, if no other questions, do you have anything else for us?
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roth, do you have anything else?
Dr. Bishop, I do not subject any questions. If not, then it looks like I've got Mike Fleckenstein coming up behind me.
Hey, Mr. Fleckenstein.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And through the Board President to the Board, thank you for the opportunity to update you tonight. And so just a few quick things. All of these folks that you're going to hear from tonight, I really feel like our role is to try to help them continue business with this change in the way that we're working. And so as you see tonight, we've made an adjustment to our board meetings. And one of the things we worked on over the weekend was really provisioning these Zoom accounts for every single person in the district. And so all, every employee in the district now has the ability to do this, to reach out to their families, to work with their students, and to continue business as their employees may have to be at home. And so I really look at our job as continuity, both from an education standpoint, a business standpoint, a communication standpoint, and really sort of long-term planning. What does this look like as we move forward? So on the instruction front, we have already started and created a process to be able to help students that don't have devices, so that schools can check out Chromebooks and we can reconfigure those to be used at home. We've also worked with, started working with all of our local providers and then some national providers to try to find connectivity for folks that are connectivity challenged, so that we don't put burden on folks if we need to go that direction, if we move into a longer-term education delivery model. We helped with folks to put together a needs assessment to really be able to talk to every family member this week with, you know, the teachers doing a wonderful job, doing that needs assessment. And part of that needs assessment is for us to understand how ready each household is if we wanted to continue to provide some resources, some educational resources digitally. And so from that, we'll take that information and we'll work with all of our partners and our team to come up with solutions so that we can hopefully provide some equity as we move forward in continuing education. To that same front, we also spun up a parent and student service desk that we will be able to turn on live if we end up in that situation where we want to do that. Next step really is business continuity. How do we continue to work here when we have folks that may be in isolation, but are critical to the mission and folks where we want to really be able to social distance and move people that can work from home to be able to work from home? And there's a lot of moving parts in that from a business standpoint because there are some applications that work really well in that model and some that don't. And so we've been working with each department over this last week to make sure that they can continue business. Payroll continues to go out, that we can continue to do the budget, that we can continue to run all of our services. In fact, today, as the teachers were getting on Zoom for the first time, we actually pushed our entire service desk to home. And we had them work on soft phones through their computers. And so the teachers never knew they were at home. There was less than, not a single teacher waited more than thirty seconds to get help today as they were getting on. And so that model just worked perfectly for us. So if we end up in that boat at some point, then we have the ability to continue to provide that support for the district over time. Working on the website to provide additional educational resources with the instructional team, as well as providing tools to communicate to our staff. You noticed early on that we had a few glitches around the communication. And that was because Blackboard, a national provider, really was overwhelmed there. You know, it's unprecedented to have the entire nation sort of on the same, having the same issues and trying to communicate to large numbers. And so with that, we worked with their CEO to get some things fixed. But we also shifted tools to be able to do some of that off of our internal systems so that we could keep our staff and parents up to date so that they didn't have to hear these decisions coming from news media, but from us directly. And with that, we then redirected our entire project management office. They are now embedded with each of the teams that are working on these to help provide them support, help provide the business processes and documentation that we need to do around all of this, around all of this effort. And that includes all the stuff that's happening in IT as well as what does this look like from an instructional standpoint if we need to continue this long-term? And so it's a great time to be in technology. And if there are any questions, I'd love to entertain them.
Mr. Donley.
Patience in your teaching of the Zoom today. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from board members or comments?
Wanted to ask, if we are able to provide internet service to students through dongles from providers, does that put them inside our district gateway or is it unfettered access to the internet?
So what I'm working on right now is there's a company that's called Kajit, and they're really designed for K-12 hotspot connectivity. And so it's a managed device that allows us to bind a device to it, them to get filtered access. We also have some systems that do that on the Chromebooks that we would put out. But it allows us to control centrally that filtering on the device. It also allows us to control the sites that we would want them or allow them to go to, the amount of bandwidth they could use. And so there's a whole bunch of control with this device that you wouldn't get with a standard sort of unfettered hotspot. I'm also working, though, with some local providers to see what other options are available. At the end of the day, we won't hand out a device that we're not sure will be filtered to the best of our ability at the household level so that folks don't end up in those issues. Like, for instance, currently, migrant ed has some of those devices through our Chromebooks. And we use software on the Chromebook to ensure that students can't get to sites that they're not supposed to.
And if I could remind board members to raise their hand so I can call on you when you go in queue. Deana Mitchell and Margot, did you still want to talk?
No, Andy asked my question. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
So I'm just going to be a broken record. The fact that we got through today with all of the teachers reporting to schools and working remotely, and everybody was serviced within thirty seconds, and the technology function, that is just, it's amazing to me. I just have to say kudos to everybody. That I did not think that was going to be possible. I was really just amazed by that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm just going to add one more thing just about this amazement. So the survey that we are doing covers many different items that we wanted to assess from our students. And one of them was a device as well as connectivity. And our teachers in their rooms, or if they were in the rooms or at home, reached over at the last I looked, because it's an active document. We can see twenty-nine thousand students personally with a phone call. And there's a little over eleven hundred that we already know don't have a device that we would support. So there's going to be more, we know that. But it's that detailed as to the specifics of the need, whether it's food, health, connectivity, what they're used to in learning, and any other needs. So it's just amazing. I'm sure Mark Stock and his team are going to talk about that because they rolled out the deployment. But it did have technology and looking at those data that came in, it's specific as to what kind, is it an iPad, is it a phone, is it a PC, is it a Mac? I mean, we're getting details so that if we ever had to troubleshoot the connectivity with our own computer, we could deploy that. So just really just impressed as well when you hear further.
Okay. Are there any other board members with questions or comments? If not, we'll move on.
Okay, Matt Tiefert?
Yes, good evening. Brief report from Human Resources. As the Board knows, a letter went out last week soon after the announcement from the superintendent that the district would be closed to students and spring break extended with guidance to employees related to resources that were available to them, information that was available to them. That was followed up the following day with an employee-focused letter around location to report to work during this week. We've worked through a number of issues and will continue to do so related to, you know, specific questions we're receiving from employees about their work assignments, their work duties, issues around pay, leave. I mean, all of the issues you may expect that come up when the entire workforce is essentially put into a different frame of reference with respect to their usual responsibilities and reporting location. As Member Mitchell mentioned, many success stories, principals have done a phenomenal job in working with, in particular, teaching staff to move toward a telework model. And that work will continue as we move into what may become as we all expect a longer closure potentially. I think we've laid the groundwork for that. There is a telework agreement for AEA members that is ready for principals to put into place. We'll be working with principals and directors to identify other areas within the district workforce that may be able, where those job duties may be accomplished via telework or in some other fashion at a different location. Part of this effort has been frequent communications with the representatives and presidents of the various bargaining units. Andrew Sunboom and Lloyd Ross and I have been in frequent communication with all of the union heads to work through these issues and to try to establish effective and collegial channels of communication in an effort to collectively work together to make the best of this difficult situation. There will be a follow-up letter to employees likely tomorrow before midday that provides further direction with respect to work expectations moving forward and specifically through the March thirty window of state school closure with respect to serving students at school locations. That letter has been worked through by the superintendent's cabinet and is currently still in draft form. We expect we will involve the union leaders in discussions around that letter and look towards reaching agreement, again, in the spirit of moving forward collectively and trying to address these many questions that are coming to them from their members. In the talent management area, you know, hiring has, of course, slowed. We do have, we did have a number of hires in the works. And the generalists and their staff are moving through those. We have, of course, pushed pause on the short-term substitute system as we don't perceive at this time a need to continue filling those positions. as we don't perceive at this time a need to continue filling those positions. And we also are looking in the leave area at ways in which we can effectively communicate leave options for our members or our employees, rather, many of whom have questions about specific circumstances that they're facing. We have some of the common areas of concern are in the areas of return from travel, the need or desire to self-quarantine related to that travel. We've also had many questions about the type of leave that would be applicable in various situations. We developed early on a frequently asked question document that's available to all employees and that was referenced in the first employee letter that walks through a number of those more common areas where we received the, the most questions. But of course, folks all have their own experience and are, in sometimes a need of, of, of one-on-one guidance. Our, our lead specialist is doing her level best to respond in a timely way, but is also relying on the, the FAQ document that I referenced and some additional materials we've placed on the support central system for our district employees to help answer some of those more common questions because the call volume for, for her, for the lead specialist is, is overwhelming at this time. Those are the, the highlights, if you will, or the overarching points in terms of our HR response to this crisis to date. And I'm happy to entertain questions.
Board members, any questions or comments? I'm not seeing any raised hands, so we'll move forward.
Thank you, Madam President. Anderson?
Good evening. This is Jim Anderson, the Chief Finance Officer. Obviously, we, we develop tracking mechanisms very quickly in the event federal or state assistance may be available in the future. We've worked with IT for the most part or operations to facilitate emergency procurements for sanitation and naturally IT equipment. And honestly, I'm just in full support mode as the staff works through a myriad of challenges. And that's my update.
Are there any comments or questions from the board? So I do have one question. Do we know yet how this is going to affect our budget?
I guess to the president, for the next two weeks, it's counted as in-service days. So there's really no impact in terms of revenue and expenses. After the next two weeks, you know, sometime in the next week, we'll probably be at a point where we can discuss that with a little bit more fidelity.
Ms. Hildy, you have a question?
That was my question and I, I can't imagine everybody now, but I'm, I know everybody is excellent at their job. I just want to make sure we have the money to do things well and make sure we don't have interruptions the best we can. So I will appreciate any updates when we're, can do that with some confidence, I guess.
Right. We'll be able to provide an update at the next finance meeting. By then, I think we'll have a pretty solid foothold on any outside expenses that were extraordinary, any cost savings, which there are certainly some significant cost savings as well. So Roger, I'll, I'll provide that.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'm not seeing any other board questions or comments, so we'll move forward.
And, and Madam President, just to give you a mind's eye, some of the cost savings would be in substitute costs upwards of about, you know, over $400,000 a month, could be. But then there'll obviously be some expenditures. So just to give you a mind's eye of, of what the differences might be. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Right. It's about $400,000 a week on substitute is our max rate through the year. So it's pretty significant, but we also have other costs that, that are higher. So.
Well, we'll, we'll get it all figured out.
I misquoted that. That was 25% of what we said. So good. Glad we got that right. But, but you just have, have an idea of how, how would you save money? It, it doesn't maybe make sense because we're expending money as well, but it just depends on the certain areas. At this time, here's, it might be a, one of the things you're most interested in is academic services and what that team has to offer. And I've asked Dr. Stock and I just wanted to share, might I share that Dr. Stock is, he did visit a level-two country. He can work, but because we wanted to get a jumpstart on seeing the fidelity of our Zoom meetings, we, we put him at his house. So that's good.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, and thank you, Madam President and Board. So I am here tonight to talk a little bit about what's going on in the academic services department. And I want to start out by simply saying that if it weren't for all of those people who just spoke to you about all the things they do, that the mission of this district around academics would not exist. And so all of the things that have happened, every person here that spoke to you has had some part in the kind of work that we're beginning to do and have done here. Dr. Bishop alluded to our, our beginning step was to do a needs assessment. So right now, this day only, it, it may surprise you, but we are up to almost 32,000 phone calls that have been made personally from our teachers just today. In fact, just since the moment Dr. Bishop had last looked at it, it's gone up 3,000 more calls. I keep looking at it and even as we speak into the evening, teachers are still calling families. The numbers just keep turning every time I look at it. So here's what we can tell you. Forty-one percent of our students have a desktop computer. Seventy percent have a laptop. Fifty-six percent have a tablet. Seventy percent run a smartphone with data. There's only 4.4% who say they have no device. And those who are at home and with those, of course, multiple, the reason those numbers don't equal 100 is most of them and many of them have multiple devices. But what we knew now is that 65% of our students have the ability to print hard copy papers with a printer at home. We now know that 87% of all the students surveyed have an internet connection at home. 10% have a cell phone internet only. And there are 3.3% surveyed of those 32,000 who say they have no internet access. Ninety-five percent of those who have internet say that it, the speed they have will meet their needs for whatever we would require. So another question that wasn't regarding technology that was asked was very interesting. Ninety-one percent of those surveyed say that they have adequate childcare during our school closure time. So those were the questions that we reached out to. But I think probably even more important than that is the human connection. The, the benefit of having every teacher reaching out to their students and making a personal connection at home has made a huge impact, I believe, on our community who are feeling disconnected and lost at some point in all this. And I think that alone has, has gone a long way towards helping people feel connected. So that's how we started with a needs assessment. So now we'll move to the instructional planning portion. So our instructional services fall into two categories. One is what we would call supplemental resources. So as we speak, Teaching and Learning Department, in conjunction with teachers, are sorting through resources we have available that we can make available for the elementary, for the middle and for the high school. Now, the hard part is to sort through that to find things that are very high quality, accessible to all, and that they can be supplemental. So we're beginning the process of communicating out to the community where those resources exist and how they can access them. Now, these are supplemental because during this two-week period of school closure by the state for in-service, this is a time when teachers are trying to get up to speed with this sort of new, new paradigm we're in. So because of that, there's no grades being given. Teachers are not allowed or are asked not to, to do required assignments. This is a time for us to just simply provide resources for parents to try to connect the families together. So once we get through the supplemental piece, at the same time, we're starting phase two. Phase two of our instructional planning involves what do we do if there's an extended closure? If this goes on beyond that, then what? So what we're doing at this time is we've broken that extended closure piece into two phases. Phase one is where we're going to look at what we're calling the K-8 phase, where we're building the concept of district-level modules or units that all teachers of, say, third grade, all teachers of fourth grade can access. And we're beginning with language and math as those priority areas first. And then we will build those units or modules that all teachers of the same grade can then use as a, as a framework or a base. From that, of course, schools and teachers will then individualize and do many different things for their own students and their own classes. Probably our biggest priority right now is going to be also to look at grades nine through 12. These are where our credit-bearing classes exist. And interesting enough, this week, the Office of Civil Rights issued some guidance that says that if you don't offer any services, then you don't need to worry about discrimination or equity. Well, that's certainly not going to be our approach of not offering any services. So what we have to do to provide equity and to make sure that that piece is covered is that we would, we're going to prioritize high school seniors whose graduation and whose careers there going forward are at stake. They will have priority. So any of those 3.3% students who have no internet, have no computer at home, et cetera, our resources will be deployed in a prioritization phase so that we are covering our high school seniors first, then our juniors, then our sophomores and our freshmen so that we deploy our resources in an equitable and fair manner with a priority phase in. So that's kind of the idea. Meanwhile, there's four different categories that our team has to really work through. One is the content and the curriculum. What courses? What online courses and so on? And of course, at the high school level, we will prioritize those that are required for graduation. And those will get first, first go-round with online courses and et cetera. Second priority is to work on the delivery of that content or that curriculum. So as, as Mike Mufflakenstein shared with you, all our teachers now have Zoom accounts. There are some capabilities of them connecting through Zoom with students. But we'll have to work on some training, very short time period of a couple of weeks on how to deliver that content for those that are not a combination of either online or hybrid or live or through old-school emails and et cetera. And of course, then we have to train people on those delivery. And then also mentioned was the support. How do we support students who are having trouble with their technology? How do we support the teachers who are, who are learning a new way of doing business? And how do we help parents help their children? So those are the broad categories of things that our team is working through. We have a self-imposed, very short timeline of trying to get some things together by the March 30th that we believe we can have ready for rollout. Again, it won't be a Cadillac plan. We will have to prioritize, but we will have instruction ready to roll come March 31st in some capacity once this in-service time period that the state has initiated passes. So that's, that's the end of my report. At this point, Senior Director for Elementary, Dan Barker, Senior Director, Dr. Johnson from Secondary and Jenny Knudsen, Dr. Knudsen from TNL and Cindy Anderson are online. If you have any questions regarding sped or any of the other academic areas, they'll be happy to answer your questions if I can.
Okay, Ms. Hildy?
Thank you. And I appreciate you talking about prioritizing the seniors graduating. Are they able to, let's say you have like an AP class and you've missed two weeks of that. Do they make up all of those, that particular curriculum? Or is it going to be a, an amended curriculum? How are they going to receive credit for those classes they've already started when it's going to be in a different format?
Yes. Well, I, I will let Dr. Johnson talk briefly about the credits because we have a couple of different ways we can go with that with regarding quarter credits and some other things. And I'll let, I'll let Dr. Johnson tackle that one.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Stock. So to member Hildy's question around AP classes. AP classes for our students are offered through College Board. We have been checking with them regularly about what their plan is. There's, there's a, a whole kind of bucket of issues around our, our state and how it relates to advanced placement for kids. So what we're looking is, looking towards is right now, we are going to do the supplemental education for kids. If we go into a longer-term closure, we will have a specific plan for kids in advanced placements because they will still need to progress through the prescribed curriculum so that they can take their exams. There are lots of online tools to accomplish that task. So I'm, I'm certain we can create a good package for kids that are in advanced placement classes to get that work done and progress forward. They are talking at College Board about even ways that we can administer tests at the end of the school year to kids at home right now. They haven't quite figured that out because typically advanced placement tests are offered face-to-face in, in groups. And so if we go into a longer closure at this point, we'll have to work closely with them on all of, all of those types of things that will come up.
Are there any other questions by the board or comments? I'm not seeing any. So Mr. Stock, if you want to.
Alyssa Vekalas.
Vekalas, yes, Ms. Vekalas.
Sorry, just trying to get everything moved around. So am I really, really understanding this right? That these two weeks are, you know, no student contact days? These are basically two weeks of just in-service days and zero expectation of the students from a district educational perspective? Yes, we're getting lots of, you know, fun ideas from teachers and stuff like that, but there's no educational mandate over these two weeks?
I wouldn't, what I would say is that we, teachers have been asked not to do required assignments that take grading that would affect a grade. This is, these are two weeks of in-service days. And so I'm sure that there's probably teachers talking to students about how to maintain and keep up with certain things. But as far as us having grades or requiring that, the answer is no. We've been, these are in-service days only. These are a chance for the teachers to wrap their heads around a new way of doing business and to get trained up on how this is going to look going forward.
And this, Dr. Stock, this may have been answered, but, and then Ms. Hildy, I'll get to you in just a moment. Are, are these days that have to be made up at the end of the year?
No. Yeah, these are, yeah.
And Madam President, might I add on to that, just to add to that? They, they are not. And then the governor, that's why he was very specific that he would like teaching staff to work to be able to deploy. If we have a program that is accepted by the state that allows us to continue education in, in an effective manner, that we may not have to extend the school year actually. And depending on the COVID-19, there might not necessarily be summer like we used to, to know it. So our goal is to really gear up enough to be able to continue learning, to be able to have an ending point as such. Certainly, if the school year was extended, then those, there's a domino effect with that with employees working now, not working now after these 30 days. And that's why we have a, a little bit of time to, to look at this, to see what's possible.
Okay, great. Ms. Hildy and then Ms. Felling.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to put out, you, you know, even if we're not having grades taken, we already have schools around our district where that's just standard course and learning is for the sake of learning. We know what happens in the summer when our students aren't engaged in learning. They get, they fall behind. So just in however we're communicating that, you know, learning happens every day, regardless of whether a grade's going to be taken and, and being mindful of, you know, summer slide. We don't want a slide over this two weeks. And even just the values of reading and doing the supplement. and doing the supplemental materials that teachers provide and really respecting the work that teachers put into providing those. I hope, I'll be sharing that with parents to hopefully communicate the value of that.
And Ms. Bellamy.
Yes, I just needed, I just wanted to just say again how important that needs assessment is. I mean, I don't know who came up with it, but it's a great idea. It really pulls us closer to families and give us an idea of what, what their needs are. So I, I, I just think that just taking time to do that, and it does take time to do that. And then the governor was quite clear. He said he was extending spring break, and we just don't, you know, we don't do instruction during spring break. So, but at the same time, I do think the staff, we're asking staff to reimagine their, their jobs, their work, and how to apply it in different formats, and that takes time too. And so if we have to go to the extended closure, I know we'll be ready for that. My other question has to do with impact to special ed. And are we, are we in violation of any, do we need to be concerned about any potential violations?
Madam President, through the President to the rest of the board, I would say no. I will tell you that Cindy Anderson is also online. She may want to speak to that, but one of the concerns that she has had that we're working through is to make sure that a free and appropriate education is handled in line with each of those grade levels. So for example, when we prioritize seniors, then we have to go through every senior's IEP. And the issue is if we're providing alternative sources of accessing that information, we must make sure that we've accommodated for every one of those other seniors. If we have a course that's an apex course, that's offered one of the courses that are required for graduation, we have to make sure we're providing enough accommodations and interventions within that course shell so that we have allowed access to that content. So to answer your questions, I wouldn't say we have no concerns. I would say that we are working through those concerns on a grade level basis, based on the students' IEPs at that grade span, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments in the queue. Do board members have any other comments or questions?
With, with that, Madam President, I want to just share again my gratitude and the working team. It's, it's been nonstop, as you can imagine, with meeting through the weekend and continuing the work. But I, I think that things are going to be okay. We're going to see the end of this too. So I just want to thank you again for allowing us to do this great work and support the people of ASD, especially our kids. And I, might I suggest that in, in line with good etiquette and teaching practices online, it's appropriate, since we've been sitting and contentedly listening, that a two-minute just stretch and come back to, to do the meeting again.
I'm going to let Mrs. Bellamy, she has her hand raised, comment first. And then after that, I'd like to make a comment, and then we will take a two-minute break.
And that, and my comment is really pretty much just self-care. You guys are working so hard, and you're taking care of everybody else's babies. Take care of yourselves and take care of your own. And if we can help, just let us know. I, I don't know what I could do, but hey, call on me. But you guys, thank you. Take care of yourselves and your families.
And I'd just like to say, I think words are not enough. It's, it's hard to express our gratitude from, you know, everyone, from the administration staff, from the teachers, the nurses, you know, nutrition, I mean, everyone. Every single person in this district has contributed to the success of being able to carry on business, not as usual, that's for sure, but to carry on and to meet the needs of our students. And again, I, words just can't convey how much I appreciate and the gratitude that I feel. I'm going to get emotional, sorry, for everyone. So with that, we're going to take a two-minute break, and we'll be back.
We love you, Star.
Thank you.
Dave's back, just Margot maybe.
Oh, okay, I think I've seen Margot. Are you back, Margot?
All right. Okay, are you ready? Did we call back in, Star?
Yeah, except I've done something to my screen, and now I can't see anything.
I can do the consent agenda.
Yeah, I need to see why I'm, like, I don't know why this is doing this.
And President Mar said, I was just going to reiterate that we're going to be, I'm hoping that we'll do a voice vote for the items, okay.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out why.
President Mar said, up at the top right-hand corner, it might be how you display it. Like a little box that you.
So for some reason, I've got, it says Ashley on my main screen instead of the, let's see what this does. Ah, there we go, okay, we're good.
Okay. I move to approve the Consent Agenda ASD Memorandum Number 0106 Personnel Report in the January 7, 2021 Work Session Minutes.
Second by Halloman.
Okay, board members, please vote. And I believe we're doing this by a voice vote, correct? Katie?
Correct, by the President.
Okay, do you want to call roll and have him vote?
Certainly. Member Halloman?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
And Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes with seven yeas. I need, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my, my statement here that I need to read, so it'll take me just a moment. Okay, so, and, sorry.
Oh, President Mar said, I'm sorry, I was, my mic was muted. I was just going to let you know that I do not have anyone signed up for testimony on any of the action items.
Oh, okay. Well, then we won't read it then if we don't have anybody signed up, so. All right, let's move forward.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 101, An Award of a Term Contract for the Purchase of Commercial Air Filters on an As Required Basis Used Throughout the Anchorage School District to PacWest Air Filter for the Period of March 31, 2020 through June 30, 2023, with Two One-Year Option Periods in the Estimated Semiannual Amount of $77,012.49 for a total not to exceed the contract amount of $770,124.90.
Second, Halloman.
Okay, just a brief question, Katie, on this. Did we post a number that people could actually call in, or did they have to sign up prior to?
We had the request that people sign up prior to.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there any, and I see, Ms. Hildy, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to ask, I saw that the bid went out to seven, but we only got one return of the bid. Usually, there's like an estimate on the district's part, you know, like a roof will say expected bid return. I didn't see one for this. Is it in line with the expected cost? And maybe speak to why there might not have been more than one bid turned in.
Tom Roth, can you answer that question?
So, so through, through the President to, to member Hildy, this, 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 as I understand, was, there was only a, a single responsive bidder for, for the, the request. And what this is, it's really, it's service stock for, for all of the HVAC systems in, in the district. So I, I, I think to your, to respond to, and Dave Whiting is probably the more competent person to provide the detailed answer, there was only one vendor that, that was able to provide a responsive bid.
That answer question, Ms. Hildy?
It's, it's fine.
Okay. Do we have any other board members with questions or comments? Not seeing any. Board members, please vote. And again, Katie, if you'll take the role.
Yes, I will. And Madam President, I just wanted to clarify that we did, we do have a kiosk set up here, and it was also posted that if people from the community wanted to come and testify that we would have a Zoom location here, and we do not have anyone.
Okay, great, thank you.
So President Mar said?
Yeah.
I think that Dr. Bishop might have been trying to get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Bishop.
I just wanted to share what Katie did to the question, to get it on record, that there was a request through, to sign up for testimony if we call you. But there was also an opportunity that if you wanted to be present at the meeting, there would be a kiosk with the meeting on our IT people, those that, you're not at the district office. We have a kiosk out front that members from the community, as long as we kept it under 10 at one time, could come in, be at the kiosk, see the meeting going, and testify during the items, being present if they had planned on that. But no one is here, and we keep checking it. So just wanted to let you know that both public access points were available.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Bishop, to get that on the record. Okay, board members, Katie, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Member Halloman?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donley? Thank you. Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
And Member Bellamy?
Yes.
I got it.
Okay, Memorandum Zero, Memorandum Number 101 passes unanimously with seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 088, Allowing Family Partnership Charter School Academic Policy Committee to Apply to Renew Their Charter and Contract with the Anchorage School District One Year Prior to the Expiration of Their Current Tenure Charter and Contract.
Second, Halloman.
Do we have any board members with questions or comments? Anyone? Hey, if I'm not seeing any hands raised, so Katie, if you'd call roll.
Member Halloman?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
And Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Memorandum 088 passes with seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 109, An Adopted Resolution Supporting HB 181 Public Schools Mental Health Education.
Second, Halloman.
Okay, thank you. Any board discussion? Ms. Mitchell, would you like to speak to this?
Sorry, I was not muted, or I was muted. I talked about this in a fair amount of depth at the last meeting, so I don't want to belabor this. But basically, there is a bill in the legislature that basically would include language about mental health in the state statute that also talks about physical health and nutrition and those types of things, the importance to including mental health in educating our children. It's something that I think our district does very effectively, but this would make it, it would, it would give the Department of Education and Community Development a year to develop, put a bill around this to provide to other districts around, to provide to districts around the state. And we know that mental health is a huge issue for our students. And I'm not going to read the entire resolution, but we do know that, you know, 12% of our students have made a suicide attempt in the past year. 36% of our students here in Anchorage have felt sad or hopeless for almost every day for at least two weeks over the past year. We have high ACEs of trauma, which link to mental health issues, but those can be overcome. So I'm educating students about that. It's a very collaborative approach in terms of how they plan to curricular together. And I would love to see our board support this effort.
Do we have any other board comments? On, yes, Ms. Bellamy, and then Ms. Hildy.
So, yes, I, my, my only concern with, I mean, the, the, the bill, I do agree with the bill. I guess it's, my concern has to do with the process and whether or not it is truly going to be a collaborative process, which would include K-12 educators in the development of the curriculum. It reads as if the Department of, it reads as if DED is going to just do its thing and then send it down to us. And I, I would hope that we would have, or at least the K-12 expert piece would be in there. Do you have any information on that, Gina?
I do not, but I can get that information, and we can certainly request that that is, you know, that the bill, they consider amending the bill if that's not part of it. We can amend the resolution to add something to that effect.
Yeah, I, I, I would feel, I would feel better supporting it if we could add something, maybe in that third to last bullet. I don't have it in front of me, the resolution. If we could add something that lets them know that, that, that we expect to have, you know, K-12 educators in that collaborative developmental process for the curriculum.
Ms. Hildy, and then Mr. Donley.
Thank you. Just aside from my general reservation against resolutions, this one thinks just a little bit, because we had an opportunity last fall, or last while ago, to address mental health in our district. And we said, it's too hard to change. It's going to be too much of a strain on our students. If we really value our students' mental health, we could have changed school start times. We could have, we have the power and authority to do things to address our students' mental health. And so, so aside from, I just generally don't like resolutions unless there's something really happening with them. I, I would rather us do action than talk about somebody else doing action.
Mr. Donley?
Yeah, as the author of the childcare portion of this existing statute, I think this is an excellent addition to the statute, and I strongly support it.
Ms. Vekalas?
I, I support it in spirit and especially the intent, you know, on a statewide basis, because I do believe that, you know, we are doing the best we can as a district. I'm concerned about what unknown or unintended, you know, fiscal, you know, consequence it's going to bring to bear on our district, because none of that has been outlined yet. And, you know, much like Member Bellamy had said, we don't have anybody from the K-12 perspective currently assigned. And so either we don't vote on this right now, because it needs, you know, to be modified, or if we do, we, you know, maybe consider voting on it as is, instead of trying to amend in all the different ways that video conferencing might be, I'm a little tough with. But like I say, I support it in spirit, but I can't support a resolution of something where there's just not enough information on the other side, you know, the state side right now, to be able to do that.
And I, I would have to agree, as I read this, there is money to develop a person, to develop the curriculum. to develop the curriculum and to oversee it. But as a district, we don't know what that curriculum is, what it entail, um, whether we have the funds. To me, it's an unfunded mandate. I do believe that, um, you know, anything we can do for mental health is beneficiary. But as far as I'm concerned, there's too much in this bill, as it stands now, that leaves unanswered, unanswered questions. And what our, um, what our responsibility as a district would be. Any other comments?
So can I, I'm sorry, I can't find the place to raise my hand.
Go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
I, I appreciate the comments. I guess in terms of, um, so the purpose of resolutions in general is it's a way for the board to be able to support actions that other organizations are implementing. So in terms of, you know, um, it's the way that we can show that we support something somebody else is doing. I completely share Member Hildy's views that action speaks a lot louder than words. But when there are other organizations proposing ideas, and they do intersect with our area, it's a way for, it's, it's a mechanism for us to be able to express support for that. So that's, that's the purpose of, um, you know, resolutions, and that's why the municipality operates. That's why we do them. Um, in terms of, um, I know that the way that that statute is worded for everything that's in it, and Member Donley might be able to speak to this more effectively than I can, it is not designed to force districts to have to spend money to do these things. It's more of a guidance, um, issue. We certainly can either modify this proposed amendment now, or we can rewrite it. But basically, what it would do is it would say, yes, we absolutely think that supporting student mental health and talking with students about the importance of understanding these issues and being aware of them and taking care of their mental health is just as important as taking care of their physical health. That's basically what, in my mind, it says. So, um, I guess, I, I don't know exactly if, you know, I guess it's up to the will of the board if we want to table it for another meeting, or if we want to vote on it as is, or if we, you know, how we want to approach this, or if we want to amend it tonight.
Okay, well, I'm going to let Ms. Hildy speak, and then, um, Ms. Mitchell, if you want to put forth an amendment that we table it, or if we, or if you want to move forward. So if there's anybody that wants to amend it, or table it till the next meeting, or, you know, whatever, we can do that. But I'm going to let Ms. Hildy speak first, and then Dr. Bishop.
Okay.
And Mr. Holloman.
Thank you. And I, I'm not looking to belabor my position on the effectiveness of resolutions and the difference ways the municipality does it. Um, there are lots of ways for the board to show support for other organizations. One of them is simply to do the work with them and to partner with them. Uh, we had lots of people willing to partner on school start times, and that's actual work showing support together. Um, we did our legislative priorities. We, as a board, went through that process, and we communicated it to the legislature. And that is what I want to communicate and, and hold to it. We, we already did it. So that's, that's just my view on it, and I understand most board members disagree, but, um, that's where I'm at.
Okay, Ms. Dr. Bishop, and then Mr. Holloman.
Thank you, Madam President. And I wanted to share with the board that, along those same lines, Member Hildy brought up that it wasn't your legislative priority. So when we were asked to write a letter of support, we did so in regard to the board. But we also placed in the administration's, uh, you know, cautions, uh, that, uh, there did seem to be a group of people missing, uh, in discussing and creating curriculum that would go into K-12 schools. And it didn't explicitly list those people, as a member Bellamy had suggested as well, that, um, the bill took time to list specific other members who would create the curriculum, but not K-12. So we, uh, supported the intent shared in the letter with the committee, especially the sponsor of the bill, that, uh, the school board has supported mental health and demonstrated that, and wrote about our legislative item. But we did caution them in regard to a portion of the bill that we did feel was missing. Thank you.
Mr. Holloman?
Um, yes, I'd like to say that I think the response, we ought to have fairies according to the condition. The condition we have is this is a state that has constantly looked past the mental health state of our students for decades. And if this was about fine tuning something that was sort of working, or, or taking action on something that was complex and we needed to perfect, it would be one thing. We need to start this. We need to begin to have some kind of curriculum. It won't be perfect the first year out of the gate. It won't be perfect in the first three years. But we need to kind of get this on the books and start going forward. This is one of the huge headwinds to our test scores, to the well-being of our students. Uh, the legislature is finally doing something about it. I say we give them an attaboy and, and be watching and be part of the process as it goes forward. But if the bill doesn't pass, then another year goes by, at least, before we actually begin to do it. So I support this. I support doing it tonight, and I hope the legislature moves on with it.
Mr. Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. This statute provides a lot of leeway to local school districts and how they choose to conform with it. So we would retain a tremendous amount of leeway here locally on how to think about this particular issue. And we've just heard from so many of our teachers on the front lines of how challenged they are with dealing with child trauma. There are students that have been victims of, of, of different types of abuse and trauma, and how difficult it is in educating them while also addressing those issues in their lives. So I agree with Member Holloman. This, this is just a start. It's a good start. And it doesn't take away our flexibility to tailor something that's really targeted towards the issues that Anchorage faces.
Mr. Holloman, and, I mean, Mr. Um, uh, Donley, when I read that bill, I really didn't see anything in there that gave us that leeway, that the curriculum would be developed. It didn't say that we could modify it, or, or, um, would you share that with us?
Certainly, President, uh, President Marsette. Um, that statute's been in place a long time. It has a list of suggested, um, curriculum. Not all of it is specifically enforced by the state, but it's a guideline for, for, for local school districts to utilize as they're thinking about what is appropriate in those particular categories. And this bill actually goes a little bit farther and actually has deed, or the Department of Education, adopt some recommended curriculum in this particular area. But it doesn't mean that districts can't enhance that or modify it to really fit the local needs.
And Dr. Bishop, when, when your, your, you and your staff read this bill, was that the same conclusion you came to?
Well, it, it didn't speak to it, and we were coming off of the prior bill that happened in regard to Breeze Law, that there were requirements then that were written into it as it went through the process, weren't, that weren't checked. Um, the, the statement in regard to every student, and then it ended up being twice a year in high school, the manner in which to, in a district like our size, to manage that was difficult. I think you recall, after my first year, I was going into the second year, the, the outcry from teachers that, uh, at the high school level, because we don't have a set health course, they had to take that health course in, in eighth grade, that, uh, the, the courses that students actually had were the English and the social studies, because those are the ones that they would take all four years, that we ended up, uh, having very uncomfortable discussions on dating violence from, uh, you know, teachers that, that pushed back, that they, uh, didn't think that they were, um, prepared enough to teach that. So, uh, our cautionary, uh, tale from that was to, to listen to our educators and, and to ensure that, uh, the K-12 mindset is in there when they, um, you know, di- design programs, uh, that are for, uh, health and human development, as well as, um, those other regulations. So, um, specifically just from recent history, we were, our, our staff were cautionary in what happened, uh, just three years ago.
Ms. Vekalas?
So I guess, yeah, my, my biggest concern still stands that, um, we're being asked to support something that we don't have all the details in. Um, it's, I, I would rather see this get, you know, flushed out and worked out more than supporting something where, uh, we just don't know. It's the unknown. Um, and my understanding is, by the time something hits, you know, a state statute, we're getting past suggested anything. It's, you know, becoming, you know, more of a mandate. Um, and so I just, I've got a lot more concerns than I have comfort with this. And so I support it in spirit, but I cannot support this, you know, resolution, you know, for a, a state-level bill, that there just are not enough details in it, that I believe are, you know, going to, you know, convince me to work for it right now.
President Marsette?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I try not to find your phrase my hand.
Oh, yes.
But may I just, and I also don't know how to get rid of the faces, so when I can look at this entire bill, but may I read what this says?
Certainly.
Okay, so what it says is, um, I don't know if I can be able to read it under this, uh, this thing. It is the intent of the legislature that the Board of Education and Early Development develop guidelines for instruction in mental health in consultation with representatives of mental health organizations, including the National Council for Behavioral Health Providence, South Central Foundation, Anchorage Community Mental Health Services, North Star Behavioral Health System, and the National Alliance on Mental Illness. So I hear what people are saying, that K-12 is not explicitly in here. I think that the framers of this bill, because they said it is the Board of Education and Early Development which does K through 12, I believe that they implicitly assumed, and maybe we need to make it explicit, that that, that deed will include educators. But in addition to that, mental health professionals need to be at the table. And what this would do is it would take this statute, and it would change it so that it now reads, oh, I got the faces up about him. Um, so I, I'll read it, and then I'll tell you what's going to be added. Each district in the state public school system shall be encouraged to initiate and conduct a program in health education for kindergarten through grade 12. This is all existing language. It doesn't say mandated. It says be encouraged to. The program should include instruction in physical health and personal safety, including alcohol and drug abuse education, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, early cancer prevention and detection, dental health, family health, including infant care, environmental health. And then the two words, "mental health," is added. And then it reads on the identification and prevention of child abuse, child abduction, neglect, sexual abuse, and domestic violence, and appropriate use of health services. So it adds mental health to this laundry list of other things that districts are encouraged to teach students about. Um, and just like the other things don't exactly lay out, this is exactly how you'll do it, it's, it is being left to the districts, should they choose to do this. And the second part that would change is that the state board shall establish guidelines for health and personal safety education programs. So that's, that's an existing piece of language. And the addition is, health guidelines must provide standards for instruction in mental health and shall be developed in consultation with the Department of Health and Social Services and representatives of national and state mental health organizations. And then it goes on to say, and this is, this is all old language, "personal safety guidelines shall be developed in consultation with the Council on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault. Upon request, the Department of Education and Early Development, the Department of Health and Social Services, and the Council on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault shall provide technical assistance to school districts in the development of personal safety curriculum. A school health education specialist position shall be established and funded in the Department, the Department of Education and Early Development, to coordinate the program statewide. Adequate funds to enable curriculum and resource development, adequate consultation to school districts, and a program of teacher training and health and personal safety education shall be provided." So it takes what already exists for a multitude of different, um, pieces of keeping our children safe, and it simply adds mental health in addition to all of these other things. I, I don't think it is going to impose an unfunded mandate on the, um, district. I do believe that the intent of the legislation is that deed, which is all about educators, would involve educators in, um, drafting the guidelines they put together that are optional guidelines. So I, you know, again, obviously, I feel comfortable putting this forward, otherwise I wouldn't have done it. But I just wanted to take the time to explain that to everybody.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this? Okay, are we ready to vote? Katie, if you will do roll call.
Yes, Madam President. Uh, Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
I'm going to say yes.
Member Vekalas?
No.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
No.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
And member Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, that, uh, resolution, H, or, um, HB 1, I'm sorry. Memorandum 109 passes with five yeas and two, two nays. Okay, so the next, um, we have our non, um, um, action items. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from here?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to pull, uh, memorandum 096 for discussion.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so no other requests. Um, we will pull, uh, 096. And Ms. Bellamy, if you'd like to, uh, address that.
Sure. So I, I, I just wa- uh, would like to have, um, the, uh, the team that worked on this just give an overview of the work that went into the process and the overview. Um, I, I, I don't know if they're on the line tonight, but, um, maybe the superintendent could do that for us if they're not online tonight.
Dr. Bishop? Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, Member Bellamy. I'm going to actually turn it over to Dr. Stock to, uh, call on his team that prepared this. And I know that they did have some information ready that we can run through very quickly if you would like. So without further ado, Dr. Stock?
I'd like to just turn it over to the senior leadership that worked the most on it, let them, let them speak up. So I see Jenny's online there.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stock. I am going to see if I can share my screen, because we do have a presentation that we can provide that provides a nice overview. So, um, right now, I'm clicking on Share My Screen, and it says Host Disabled Attendees Screening Sharing. So.
Just a second, just a second.
You happen to have the guy that knows how to do that right on.
I figured that. Okay. Think I'm able to do it now. Share my screen. So can you all see the screen right now?
Certainly can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, thank you, Superintendent Bishop and school board, for this opportunity to provide an overview of the math curriculum review process and the recommendation by the review team. Um, in advance of this presentation, I really would like to thank all the teachers and district support staff who committed their time and expertise to the review process. And I would especially like to thank Amanda Barre, our math coordinator, coordinator, and Dr. Bellamy, Christine- Dr. Bellamy, Christina Bellamy, teaching and learning director, for leading this review process. We're gonna go through an overview of the whole process and then the recommendation by the team, and then we can entertain questions from the board at that point in time. So just to start, ASD Board Policy 6141 gives authority to the superintendent to provide a comprehensive instructional program to service the educational needs of ASD students. Additionally, this board policy indicates that curriculum content should be reviewed every six years. Currently, our instructional materials, which are Go Math for grades K through 6 and Big Ideas for 7 through 8, were adopted during the 2012-13 school year, just after we adopted the Common Core State Standards. Additionally, we learned last November that the publisher, HMH, would not be printing the 2012 Go Math materials after December of 2019. So we have enough consumables to last us through next year, but that was another factor that we learned about this fall. We were still going through the review, but that was a piece of information that we learned. The first thing that the instructional leadership team did was review our math data, and this is one piece of data that we wanted to show. And to testimony earlier and other data that you have seen over the while, this chart shows the percentage of students who are proficient or higher on the PEAKS math assessment over three years. And this is grades 3 through 8. While there is some variability from year to year, the overall performance is relatively flat across time. And as you can see, it's about 50% or less of ASD students in grades 3 through 8 are at the proficient, proficient level or higher on PEAKS. The highest performance was at the fifth grade level, and the lowest was at the eighth grade level. This and other data really demonstrate that there's a need for strong curriculum, pedagogy, and professional learning in math, so that we can better meet the needs of our students, especially as the rigor of math standards has dramatically increased since we originally adopted Go Math materials and shifted over to the Common Core State Standards. And we've seen that drop in test scores as the rigor has increased in what we're expecting of students. From there, after looking at, that was our reason why, we really need to look at what we're doing for math. And based on that data, looking at curriculum reviews through ed reports and what other states have done in doing review of curriculum, and also looking at available research on different curricula through places like What Works Clearing House, that provides information on, is there a research base for different materials? The leadership team was able to narrow the review down to four different programs to take a look at, and these had some of the highest reviews on ed reports. And those four are One Into Math by HMH, and this is for K through 8. The second one was Ready by Curriculum Associates, another K through 8 program. The third one was Envision by Pearson, and that was for K through 5. And the final one was Illustrative Math by McGraw-Hill, which is grade 6 through 8. So what this provided was three programs to review for K through 5 elementary and three programs that would go 6 through 8. Some went the whole span, three, two of them went the whole span of K through 8. So it provided different options for people to look at. The next thing that was done, once they were narrowed down to four, was to put together a math review advisory committee. And this is part of the, the business process of curriculum review and adoption, and really to ensure that we have majority of teachers that are providing feedback on this process. So this was formed in the fall of 2019, and it was a joint collaboration between ASD and AEA. An application went out to all teachers in the district, and in the end, there were a total of 30 members who were on the advisory team, 25 of which were, 25 who were teachers directly in classrooms working. The other five were support staff, including Member Hildy was also a non-voting member on that team. In addition to, or, and then what the review committee or the advisory committee did was they met a total of three times from December through January, and their job was to really look at the materials and evaluate its alignment to the Common Core standards using the instructional materials evaluation tool, which is the IMET. I'll talk about that in a second. They met three times, once on December 10th, January 15th, and then lastly on January 31st, where they took all the information and were able to do a final review, voting, and recommendation for, for the program. So the IMET is the industry tool in education that's used to review curricula across the country. There are two non-negotiables and three alignment criteria that are looked at in using a rubric to, to kind of score this. The first one is a focus on alignment, so ensuring that at each grade level, what is assessed is aligned to the standards. The second one is coherence, meaning that there's really sufficient amount of time spent focusing on the major work at each grade level aligned to those standards, and that any supplemental or additional resources really align to that major work at each grade level. The three alignment criteria include rigor is the first one, so our materials should really appropriately balance time for students so that they're developing conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, computation, and practice with applications of those concepts. The next one is alignment of content and practice standards. There are eight standards of mathematical practice, and these should be intentionally supported as part of each lesson structure and routines for the student work. So they should not be separate from the content standards, but really integrated. And then finally, the last one is access for all learners. So our materials really need to provide supports for differentiation, English as a second language, reteaching, extension, culturally responsive practices. And that leads us to an overall program evaluation. And there is a rubric that goes along with this that teachers are trained in and use to evaluate the different curricula. In addition to having advisory team, we also have, did field testing. And the purpose of a field test is really to provide a short-term exploration of one or more of the programs that are being considered for adoption. This is a practice that we added on after our K through 5 review, learned some things about, and heard from teachers that we really need to try it out, not just reviewing the materials, but getting our hands on it, seeing how kids experience it, how teachers experience it, what parents think of it. And so we added that when we did our 6 through 8 ELA review last year, and we replicated that again for this one. So how teachers were selected as principals and instructional coaches recommended teachers for participation in the field test. And we, the team really tried to make sure they had a nice demographic representation of non-title title schools, different parts of town, special ed, ELL populations, male, female teachers, just really tried to balance that across the field teachers. So the chart that you see in front of you right here really shows the field testing across the district and all those sites. On December 16th, they were trained in materials, they were able to collaborate and plan for the field test, and then had some time before they started in January where they could review it and get prepared for doing that in January. Approximately 600 students participated in the field test, so we had a really nice sample size of, to see how students and teachers, you know, responded to the teaching and learning and experienced that. The other component of the review process was public viewing of materials. So there were four opportunities for different stakeholders to view materials. The first one was an opportunity for administrators and district leadership and ed center staff to be able to review it, this aligned with the general leadership day, so that principals were already in the building and they could take time to be able to go and look at what's available. And then the three other opportunities were available for ASD members, school-based staff to be able to come in and provide comments that the advisory team could consider when they were making their final decisions. So I want to share with you now, from the IMET I discussed earlier, what the average ratings were for each of the teams. So for the advisory team, who basically did the paper pencil, more digging into the materials, they, you can see here that when they did the rating, it ranged from a zero, where there's no evidence, to a three, where there's extensive evidence, and they took the average across all the people who rated it. And as you can see over in the far right column, the overall score, two really rose to the top, and that was Ready and Envision. So that, that was the one that based on, in a rubric evaluation, they were seeing. And there were some variability in each of them, and no matter what program we look at, there's gonna be strengths and weaknesses in the program, so we'll just have to take that under consideration. We want to mitigate some of those weaknesses and make sure that we can address them if, if a program does have that. We also had the field test teachers do a condensed IMET in addition to providing feedback on what their experiences were teaching the curriculum. And just like, and they did theirs separately, and the field test teachers also, the two that rose to the top were Ready and Envision. So there was some consistency in what we were seeing and what people were experiencing, as well as what they were seeing in the materials. The additional data that the advisory team considered was, they looked at the digital platform. So IT did a very detailed analysis of whether we have the capacity to utilize those tools, which we're finding out now in our current situation, is a very important factor that we need to, to look at with any materials that we adopt. The other thing is accessibility review. So how, do, are there the tools within the program that we can adjust for students with special education needs, English as a second language, those types of considerations? The team also then weighed the pros and cons of what the advisory team was seeing in the materials, as well as what the, the field test teachers saw. The field tests were able to do a panel and really engage in discussion with advisory team to understand what worked and what didn't work within the program, and weigh those pros and cons. And then finally, a teacher, a, a survey, kind of a needs assessment survey was done with K math teachers that was trying to get at, what is their current use of materials? How do they use supplemental materials? What's their digital usage and needs for professional learning? So that could be taken in consideration when considering another program and what we might want to be looking for, for supports for teachers. Materials are only one piece of it, really focusing on how you teach those standards of mathematical practice and the content standards, as well as the professional learning is just as important and probably more important than the materials themselves. So with that, all of that information, the team came to consensus around a recommendation, and it is the recommendation of the advisory team, brought this to Dr. Bishop, is that the Anchorage School District adopt Ready by Curriculum Associates as the district curriculum, and it would be for K through 8. So it would be one set of instructional materials that we'd use across that span. And we included on here a quote from one of the field test teachers that used Ready. "My students surprised me with how much growth they made with such a rigorous program." And we heard that over and over from teachers, is the rigor that is in place in, in any of these programs that they looked at was much stronger than what they were having in Go Math. And, and kids raised, they, they met that challenge when they were teaching in the classroom or testing it out. So why did they pick this? Some of the strengths of the program that the advisory team noted were the instructional strategies and routines, we're meeting the needs of kids, the strong integration of the content standards and the standards of mathematical practice, hands-on activities and modeling, really good different, excuse me, differentiation for ELL and special education and cultural responsiveness, as well as varied assessments that could be done. We're looking at this for ongoing formative assessment, and that's what you use to really differentiate your instruction and know what to do based on the needs of kids. So there was a variety of that that teachers could use to inform that instruction. And the online apparent resources were noted as a strength by the team. So what this means for next steps is, the proposal is, if, if adopted, that we would go forward with a multi-year plan. That includes professional learning, supports for schools, program evaluation, in accordance with the science of implementation. We have learned a lot over our last two implementations, from K through 5 ELA to 6 through 8 ELA, and now into math. And with each of those reviews and implementations, we're growing in our skills and applying more of the science to implementation. And what we've learned is you have to go somewhat slow to do it right. I don't want to say go slow to go fast, but it's go slow to do it right. And so when you're looking at implementation, we're looking at modeling what we did, what we're doing currently for the 6 through 8 ELA, and that is in year one, which would be next year, 2020, 21, piloting a handful of schools. And what that allows us to do is really learn what teachers need for this to be successful. It allows that group to be able to write academic plans. It allows us to order materials in the hands of teachers before the end of the year, so they're not coming back and just getting them at the launch of an implementation. It lots, allows us to problem solve. But I really want, you can understand, if we do this, it's not just that we're not doing anything else with other people because we have math data. There's a sense of urgency here that we need to take very seriously. And so it's not just about materials, but next year, we would be starting to do professional development with all of our teachers on standards of mathematical practice. What do we need in the pedagogy? So no matter the materials that they still have with Go Math, and it'll just be enhanced with new materials, they're starting to look at their practices to improve math performance for our students. So we would be starting with everyone next year, it's just kind of staggered in who gets materials and where we start with PD. And then finally, it would be district-wide, 2021, 2022 is when it would go across the district. So that is, very quickly, I know it was a lot of information, the process and the recommendation to the board. And that concludes our presentation. And I have Dr. Bellamy and Ms. Barr, who are also on the Zoom, that are available to answer questions, as well as if there's any financial questions, we have Mr. Anderson as well.
Board members, do I have any questions or comments? Mr. Donley first, and then Ms. Mitchell.
Madam Chair, since this is potentially up to almost $7 million investment by the school district in this proposed curriculum, I have quite a few questions about it. How do you want me to handle it? I have 13 questions I'd like to ask. You want me to just ask them one at a time and then go to other board members, or to work my way through them?
Well, I want to give everyone a chance to talk, so why don't we go through, go, do your first one, and then we'll go to other members, and then when no one else, there's no one else left, we can come back to you.
Member Marsette?
Thank you.
Could I just say, in the interest of time, maybe we send our questions in?
No, that's not acceptable. I've been waiting months and months to have an opportunity to discuss this.
Okay, I'm just saying, schools are closed, so.
Okay, that's fine. We're gonna let Mr. Donley ask his first question, and then we'll hear from other board members, and then we'll go back to Mr. Donley.
And Madam President, I just would ask that if we don't have the answer in front of us, because we are on limited staffing, that we be able to answer it to the board in writing, as well as posting it wherever you'd like for the public process?
Yes. And Mr. Donley, if you'd like to move forward with your first question.
Thank you, Madam President. You explained that the state of Alaska has a Common Core standard, but the Department of Education has denied that for many years. And there is a legal question about adopting a new math curriculum based so heavily on its alignment with Common Core, when state law would appear to end state funding for the use of Common Core in Alaska. Alaska Statute 1407020, duties of the Department of Education, states, "In implementing its duties, the department may not expend any money to implement the set of educational curriculum standards for grades kindergarten through 12 established by the Common Core Standards Initiative." But that's especially concerning, because so much of the basis identified in your report for adopting Ready mathematics seems to be based on its alignment with Common Core. One of the quotes from your report was, "It was determined that Ready mathematics for "It was determined that Ready mathematics for K-8 provides the strongest opportunities and alignment for ASD students relative to Common Core standards." How do you explain that conflict with state law?
Dr. Bishop?
Sorry about that. I'll let Jenny follow up. But I did want the Anchorage School Board to know that, boy, I don't have the exact date, but I know that Carol Cuomo was president or superintendent, not of the board, but that the school board adopted the Common Core as ASD's standards. While the state of Alaska has the Alaska standards for learning. Jenny, Dr. Knutson, I'm not sure the exact date, but the Anchorage School Board adopted Common Core standards as the ASD standards.
Correct. Yeah, we did. And I'm thinking it was 2011, but I would have to double check that date. And then the alignment between the state standards and the Common Core are pretty close. But our district did adopt it at that time. So that is why we've been looking at that as a standard for, within the Anchorage School District.
I'm going to go ahead with Ms. Bellamy. And then Mr. Donnelly, if there's no one else in the queue, we'll come back to you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question on the culturally responsive piece of the curriculum. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Through the President, I'm going to ask Dr. Bellamy and Amanda Barr to be able to speak to that, since they have had more direct work with the review team on that. So I'm going to turn it over to them at this point. Dr. Bellamy?
Hi, Dr. Christina Bellamy, Director, K-12 Teaching and Learning. Yes, the culturally responsive pieces, as noted, were really relative to the differentiation of support, specifically naming our students that are ELL students. Additionally, the parent supports go home in other lang, can go home in additional languages. Spanish, of course, was one. We asked about the, you know, in our RFI process through procurement, asked about other languages, and the publisher has worked on and will work on whatever our top five are if we should need that to happen. So the combination of access for families that do not speak English as a second language and the access for sound pedagogy around sheltered or scaffolded instruction for our students who speak other languages was high. In addition, so noted in the strengths in the program, teachers were very impressed with the opportunities for differentiation among different types of learning styles of kids within their classroom.
Okay, thank you. Did that answer your question, Ms. Bellamy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that has a question or Ms. Vicalis?
So I remember a couple of years ago when we rolled out the first phase of the ELA programming. And one of the components that happened that was referenced in the presentation was the timing of the board vote relative to getting materials. And then, you know, consequently, we get into, you know, the staff's hands and just, you know, like you say, what we've learned from. And so my question is for where we are today, for the challenging times that we're in, not just, you know, the whole, you know, COVID-19, but, you know, the financial challenges from a district perspective, stuff like that. What are the consequences to delaying, you know, this commitment? Or what is our, if we don't do something now, what happens? Or is now really the time, two weeks from now, the time to address this, to get this done from a timing perspective?
Dr. Bishop or?
I can't answer the, through the President, I can't answer the financials. So I'll defer to Dr. Bishop and Mr. Anderson for those things. But as far as where we're at in supporting teachers, we have talked as a team is the priority and what's needed is at a minimum, the professional learning. We need to work with teachers on what we can do to ensure our students are achieving the math skills that they need to, to be successful. So that is our priority right now, and materials can always follow that. And we do have old materials that, and just as a, keeping in mind, we have materials through next year. And then we do not have any more consumables, nor can we get them at that point. So from a, from a teaching and learning standpoint, the professional learning is probably the most important thing to prepare people for any materials that we would get. And then I'll defer to other people for the financial aspects of it.
Madam President, this Dina Bishop, the superintendent, I just wanted to share certainly that we wanted to keep this on the agenda to have the board have the ability to learn about it. But it is just non-action. And really, in reference to a member of Vicalis, the uncertainty of the times and finances and moving forward and what's happening at the state, that's all on our minds. But the purpose of this was, was you could, just to have it, understanding of it, to be able to make a vote when you could. Jim, you can share in regards to the additional finances.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So we already had the funding to be able to procure for the pilot program for next year. And we had that in this year's budget under Teaching and Learning. I think most of the board should recall, I talked about the Yosemite Drive check that we got back from the municipality last summer. And it was from a project for the road several years ago, where we partially helped pay for the road. And we ended up, the city did it under cost estimate. So they gave us the million and a half back. So we know that this million and a half that we are asking you to allow us to transfer so we can encumber it will be what we will use next winter when we buy the following year's curriculum. But when we do the contract, we need to sign up for paying it over three years. During the negotiations, Sherry, Dave, Christina, multiple others were involved. The company wanted us to do one purchase, one big, all upfront. We went back and forth for quite some time and had them spread it out. So yes, we are making a commitment, if this gets passed, to know that the Yosemite Drive will pay for the next winter's procurement. Next year's budget, this time next year, will have a million and a half dollars in it, projected for a spend the following fiscal year, and then we'll have one more. So there is some risk, but there's more risk by not moving forward at all.
Ms. Mitchell? Ms. Mitchell?
Okay, sorry, I'm unmuted now. So I'm just curious in terms of the, thank you for the, explaining the process. And I definitely am glad to hear we're going to be piloting this. Can you just talk a little bit about what the professional development will look like? Will that happen? I mean, obviously, there's so much influx right now. But will that PD, hopefully, if we can pull things together, happen this spring for the teachers who are in the pilot in the fall? Is it going to be a coaching system? Is it people who provide the curriculum who are coming up? How will that work?
Well, right now, some of that is in flux. And what happens this spring could impact when we do that PD and how that's rolled out. The goal was to identify the pilot schools and to start doing professional development at the Alaska Summer Academy and following what we did for ELA. So we are probably, if this were to pass, going to have to adjust some of that. And it may push back our timeline and when those pilot schools launch using the materials. But we would work with the vendor on what kind of training we can provide all staff. So specifically to the pilot, that might delay that. But we would just take it a step at a time. I'm also going to ask, since Dr. Bellamy was involved in some of the conversations with the vendor about the professional development, for her to talk about just some, a couple examples of the PD and what is provided so that you have a mind's eye of what that looks like.
All right, I think everybody can hear me. So thank you, Dr. Knutson. So some of the things that were discussed specifically with the vendor around professional learning was our want and requirement to be able to build internal capacity with our teachers and utilizing the professional development that they provide, but tailored to our, to the Anchorage School District and to the needs of our teachers. We have a district-wide needs assessment that was, that Dr. Knutson referenced before. So we went over some of those needs to ensure that the vendor was able to help support that, incorporating that feedback in a long-term plan. The answer was yes. And so there are various levels. So for the pilot teachers, there is ultimately like an unboxing that happens where you learn about the various parts of the materials in the curriculum, how to use them, what suggested best practice. And then teachers are given opportunities, pilot schools will be given opportunities to try those things on and to provide feedback, not only to us as central office support and trying to help inform what the rest of the schools will experience, but also to help build their capacity then as leaders for the district in a respect around utilizing the materials. So it's not just about how do we use it, but how are we fine tuning our already amazing teacher core so that we're building some leadership in those pilot schools to help inform the greater rollout? That's very empowering for our teachers. And we found even through the ELA, six, eight ELA process, that it really has been beneficial for that peer-to-peer coaching and consultation. There's also this very unique opportunity with this vendor to provide what they call targeted or specific kind of sessions. There's no guidelines to them because it's really based on what the needs are of that particular school as a pilot school. So if one school, pilot school, is really wanting to dig deeper into some assessment because that's where they're ready to go, there's an opportunity within what's already been kind of wrapped up into that negotiated, excuse me, that allows for that to happen and to take place. So it's multiple layers. And I think Dr. Knutson already addressed that there is opportunity for us to be nimble in this uncertain time with a timeline, yet still be providing quality professional learning specifically around the standards of mathematical practice and student discourse in mathematics. For teachers, that would be timely and very, and on time and responsive to their feedback as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from board members besides Mr. Donnelly? Mr. Donnelly, if you would like to proceed with your second question?
Thank you, Madam President. I hear from so many parents that Go Math was a terrible failure in respect to their ability to assist their children, their students with their homework. It's a really running theme. I was wondering how much of a factor was the ability of parents to understand and relate to this Ready mathematics program in the recommendation that it be adopted by the district?
Well, we had opportunity for people to look at the program, but then with our field test teachers, they were able to work with both students and look at the parent resources. So we could provide more information for you specifically to that, to answer your question from them.
So was there extensive feedback from parents regarding this?
As far as we could get that information from the public sessions and how many people we got to provide feedback from that one, as well as with the field test teachers, we can get that information for you, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly, you're, what are we on, third question?
Yes. So we heard the criticism during the public testimony portion of the system by which this was recommended, this particular program was recommended. How many non-ASD employees or members, just members of the public were allowed to be on the advisory team making this recommendation?
So the current business process that we have for curriculum review, I'm just going to look at who's on there for the teams, were primarily teachers and then giving the opportunity for the public and parents to be able to review it. So the vast majority were people who were going to be teaching it and delivering it. There were some other non-teaching people from the Ed Center. This year, we added a board member as a non-voting member. And that's really the process that we've done. In Board Policy 6141, there's always the option for the board to get feedback on processes for curriculum reviews and adoption. So we can look at that for the future if there's any questions around our process for curriculum reviews and adoption.
So other major districts similar to our size have a process where all the math teachers get to express a, you know, vote even, just like Anchorage School District used to do, voting on which recommended curriculum to finally recommend to the school board. Why is it that the Anchorage School District doesn't do that?
Well, our current process is because we're so, such a large district as we do applications and seek out teachers to apply to have on the teams that can do the review, that represent teachers. And again, I would say that if there's questions around our process, that is something that we can look at because we're always revising our business processes we go through to try and improve our practices according to implementation science.
So, Mr. Donnelly, I would say that, and based on what Dr. Knutson is telling us, is that they followed the process. Maybe if the board would like to look at the process and, you know, make any changes, I mean, that's our duty as a board to review policy. But I think at this point, I don't see any point, I don't see any, anything in the process says they didn't follow what they were supposed to. It might not be what we or anybody else thinks that the process should have been. But I don't think there was anything done intentionally not to follow the process. And if this is something we want to take up as a board to look at that process, I think that's certainly something we can do. Would you agree?
My next, my next, well, I wish my request that Saxon Math be fairly considered for a pilot project had been honored by the board, but it was not. So the process didn't function the way I think it was anticipated by providing for board participation.
Well, I think it was provided because, you know, you did make that recommendation. And the other board members did not agree with you. And it is by process of, you know, majority of the board.
Thank you, Madam President. So my next question is, were any of the folks that designed Ready mathematics, were they the same, any of those the same people that were the authors of Go Math?
I am going, I do not know the answer to that. It's a different vendor. So I, we can get that information for you and follow up in writing.
Okay, so Saxon Math is being used, that was the recommendation, number one recommendation by when it was a public process some years ago. And it is being used in at least four of our schools. And every one of those schools is in the top 10 currently of over 50 schools as far as their math test results. I was just wondering, could you explain again why Saxon Math, which has proven successful and our number one scoring math school in Anchorage School District uses Saxon Math, why the, why the committee felt that wasn't even appropriate for a pilot experimental program?
Okay, so one of the things that we did look at is we did look at the top 20 schools on the last two years of peak, so from 2018 to 2019. And those top 20 schools, 15 out of the And, um, those top twenty schools, um, fifteen out of the twenty use Go Math. Um, the four schools that use Saxon were in the top twenty. And then there was one open optional school that used Bridges. So there are quite a few schools that are actually on par with schools that, um, are getting results in Saxon Math that use Go Math. So again, it, it comes down to implementation, pedagogy, needs of students. So that was looked at. And the initial, um, review to narrow it down, um, like was stated in the presentation, several factors were looked at. It was looked at reviews from ed reports and other states who had reviewed curriculum using the IMET, as well as looking for research like through What Works, um, Clearinghouse. And of those, Saxon didn't score in the high range as, um, the other ones did on some of those ed report reviews, as well as some of the research with, um, was inconclusive related to What Works Clearinghouse and looking at that research. So applying the same standard across, um, the, the, all the programs, that's what was used. Um, there are other programs that are used in other open optional programs that also, um, get re, good results. So it was really looking at what's currently available, what are the ratings we have now? And what, um, is there any other research with that? Um, so that is how it was narrowed down to the four.
Is there any cost difference between buying Ready Mathematics versus, um, expanding the Saxon Math, the successful Saxon Math program to more schools?
I do not have that information in front of me, so we would have to get that information.
And Mr. Donnelly, um, I would just say, um, you know, what's going to be put before us is, uh, the recommendation from the school district. And, um, and I think they've given us a good reason why they've moved forward. Also, I, I believe that, um, even though Saxon's math is very, um, uh, successful where it is, I think that's a different demographic. Um, and we have to look at what works best for all of our students. And in those schools, I think the ones that are using the Saxon Math are definitely have more parent participation. And, um, are, are, are probably not some of our lowest performing students.
Thank you for that comment, Madam President. I guess I would say that some of these schools utilizing Saxon Math, uh, their demographics, uh, are close to Title One. And, um, they, it's a proven long-term traditional math delivery system that's proven successful. And those schools that do utilize Saxon Math, when it comes to district-wide testing, their students have to spend, uh, between ten and days or as much as two weeks being trained in Go Math terminology so that they can take the same test as all the Go Math students. And yet they still, all four of those schools ended up in the top ten math scoring schools. So that's a pretty big challenge to overcome. But my next question is, um, I just don't understand why something proven as successful as, as, well, it's not really a question. I guess it's just a statement. I don't understand why something proven so successful as Saxon Math w- in four of our schools, right here in Anchorage, wasn't even given an opportunity to have a pilot test, uh, in this process. And it just seems illogical and biased against it because it's, although it is, uh, legal under Common Core, it's not as Common Core, uh, compliant as it seems like was one of the key criteria for adopting, uh, Ready Mathematics. That was at least expressed in the report. Those are my questions, um, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and again, um, you know, I would just say that this, um, the way that this was addressed, um, that the policy and the guidelines that they had were followed. Um, as a board, if we feel that those guidelines and policy, if those po, if that policy needs to be, uh, re-looked at, we can certainly do that. But, um, and I understand your questions, but I do think that, given where we are and what our policy and guidelines are at this time, that those were followed and, um, the committee made the best decision that they could. So are there any, I'm sorry.
So if nobody.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that it, uh, I don't know why we would adopt another Common Core math despite the evidence that it's been an educational failure. According to even research published by the Obama administration on Common Core, achievement in the United States has sunk in math. It is now considered one of the worst large-scale education failures in forty years. Tests are showing dangerous long-term declines in performance with students' math achievement, reaching a new twenty-year low. I mean, that's the legacy of Common Core that our district has had for the last twelve years. And I don't think you're going to see the focus on mastery of the basics using Ready Math as is really proven successful traditionally. Um, that's because, you know, if you compare homeschool testing results and our Saxon schools' testing results, they're, they're really outperforming, uh, the general, uh, Common Core curriculum. And, and parents are choosing those things and because they're successful. And US students over the last twelve years are scoring lower than their peers in the other higher-performing countries. Um, Common Core puts students on a track to Algebra I by ninth grade, while students in Singapore are on a track to Algebra I by sixth and seventh grade. And we see examples in other states where Florida this year decided to eliminate Common Core. And it's the fourth state now to do that after originally adopting it. They've seen that it was failing and they're moving on to something better. And I really think that's what our school district should be looking at too. The things that are actually successful. And there's new studies coming out that find there's been significant negative effects on, on eighth grade math scores, uh, since the Common Core adoption. And the really dangerous thing about this is sometimes when you adopt a new curriculum, it takes a few years for it to start to work out. But with Common Core math, it's just been a downward spiral. I mean, things seem to have gotten worse and worse the more it's been used. So I just am very concerned about investing seven million dollars of the district's money into a system that's been failing us for the last twelve years. Thank you.
And Mr. Donnelly, I of course don't disagree, well, not of course, but I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. What I'm saying that as, just as the school board voted in, uh, Common Core, um, it's our responsibility as a school board to either support that or not support that. So, um, of course, that is something you can always bring up in, um, a, a, a meeting, a, a school board, uh, for us to take a look at that policy and we can give it to the governor's, um, committee. Um, but, um, I mean, that's, that's really where it kind of lays. So are there any other board comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any. Um, we are now at the port part where board requests for information, uh, RFIs. Are there any, uh, requests for information from the board? Okay, um, at this time, we do have somebody else that wants to testify, correct? Katie?
We sure do. Um, let me, uh, just give me a moment and I'll get him on the phone.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, hi, Mr. Haberman. This is Katie Grant calling from the school board office, from the school board meeting. Okay, are you, uh, still requesting to testify? Um, we are at public testimony, so I'm going to put you on speakerphone and, um, and then turn the mic on, okay?
Katie's getting it set, um, with, um, the speaker, the testifier.
I'll, I'll set the timer and then the buzzer will go off. And then you, so you'll be able to hear that. Are you, are you almost ready? Not ready? I'm here. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone and then I'm gonna get by on, um, on the meeting and, um, announce that you'll be testifying, okay? Yep, you will know. I'll, I'll let. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know, um, uh, when to start and then the, I'll have the timer on, so you'll hear a beeper. Okay, I'll get the John Speaker on, hold on for just a moment.
Okay, thank you, um, Madam President. I have, uh, Mr. Eugene Haberman on the phone. Um, and he is going to start his testimony here in just a moment. Mr. Haberman, are you ready? Sorry, Madam President, it looks like we lost him. Hold on for just a moment.
I feel like we should have some elevator music or something.
Mr. Haberman, we are, uh, trying to get ahold of you. Uh, if you could please answer your phone for testimony. Otherwise, we can take your testimony in writing if you'd like.
Katie, we'll give him a couple more seconds here and if that doesn't work, then we'll have to, um.
I believe he's on.
Mr. Haberman, are you on the phone?
Yeah, I hope so.
Okay, um, Madam President, I have Mr. Eugene Haberman on the phone and he, um, is going to give his testimony. Mr. Haberman, are you ready?
Yeah, I got time to go.
Okay, and I'll start a timer, so you'll hear a beep when, uh, when your three minutes are up, okay? Go ahead and begin.
Yeah, also, I'm working my timer here too.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead and begin.
Can you hear me?
C- can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, fine. Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Eugene Carl Haberman. I live in the Mexico Valley. I follow the public process, and the public process is inappropriate. Decision made by the governing bodies more like the public interest. No, uh, last resident for over forty, oh, forty-two years. Twenty of those years Anchorage resident also. Now, the key thing that continues to concern me is the lack of conversation with the people before you make a decision. It's not just you, the Anchorage family, the borough family. Yes, we are in a world health crisis. But what type of conversation has been going on is more so among the family members when they hold their meetings and among school board when you hold your meetings. Now, I would like to know this, before the, uh, order went out with the mayor in Anchorage, there was a regular school, regular assembly meeting in which, uh, the, uh, for public hearing on the, uh, on the, uh, school budget before the assembly. It didn't start until about ten fifteen in the evening. And it was an introduction to have a hearing at the same night. So we've got a health crisis going on, world health. We're not having appropriate conversation with the people, what's going on. And the wo, more and more people are alarmed and it's not helping things when you don't have a conversation with people before those decisions are made. I realize you're taking certain steps in how you're connecting with the people. But the people are more alarmed and more in panic when that conversation is not taking place with them. And with all due respect, that's what's going on. So, um, I'll leave with that footnote and note also that, um, not only prior to this, we have a state financial crisis and nothing, and there's, I, I'll just leave it there, okay? Um, but, um, but I'll also footnote this, before this whole crisis, you move your meetings, school board meetings, same nights as the Sunday, Tuesday night. Something as simple as that, several months later, you couldn't handle that. And now we've got a financial crisis in state, a world health crisis in the, in the world. And how can we expect you to handle these crises when you can't even handle a meeting crisis moving different nights? So the assembly meetings are met one night and you meet another night. And so I'll leave you with that and thank you. And I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Okay, with that.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman. How about good evening?
Do we have any school board or administration comments or communications? I can tell you I already messed not going into my schools.
Madam President, um, if I might, uh, report, this evening I, you know, came out to you in regard to, uh, the Sullivan Arena. And I, I do want you to know that we wanted to communicate with our families as that, uh, hit Facebook and kind of the rumor mill. We do believe that we are looking for alternate space. We actually, uh, have spoken to the mayor in regard to that that space might not be used as well. So that's still in flux, but we felt it necessary to share with parents. So the expectation, uh, is there rather than seeing it on social media. So we've had, I've had personal conversations with Mayor Berkowitz and just want to let you know that, uh, we still do expect to have graduations. Uh, we have not called them off, but, uh, they may be in alternate locations. Uh, and so just wanted to update, uh, the board on that. And there is, uh, an email that actually went out during this meeting in regard to that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I did see that. Mr. Donnelly?
I just wanted to thank the board for the courtesy of allowing me to discuss the math curriculum in a little more depth. I, you, you guys all know how strongly I feel about math and reading for our kiddos. And I just really want to make sure we make the right decision this time, um, uh, when it comes to our math curriculum. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there anyone else that has any school board or administration comments? So I will say that I've been a little under the weather, not that I think I have the coronavirus. But with respect, I did not go into the district office today or anytime until I feel better. So, um, just to let you guys know, I, I, I miss you. Um, I know that everybody, like I said, words cannot express, I'm sure, what the board feels um, in the way of gratitude from the bottom up. And, um, please, please, um, say that to everyone within our school district. Okay, any other board comments or administration comments? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?